All right. We are now at item 8.0, citizens' participation. Lexington County School District One's Board of Trustees solicits the advice and counsel of its citizens. To encourage this participation, the board provides a citizens' participation period during board meetings. In order to speak, you must be the parent or legal guardian of a student currently attending a Lexington District One school, a taxpayer residing in the Lexington District One attendance area, an employee of the district, or a student currently attending a Lexington District One school. You may comment on agenda items, school operations, policies, programs, or other matters. You may not speak about specific individuals, whether students or staff. We want to remind you that this meeting is being livestreamed, and the recording of this meeting will be part of the public record in perpetuity. We want to give everyone who came tonight an opportunity to speak, and in order to do that, I will call on each speaker by name and ask you to approach the lectern at the back of the room. The board will not reply to your remarks nor take any action during the board meeting in response to your comments or questions. You may address the board for up to three minutes. Please do not clap or make any comments either while an individual speaks or after he or she finishes. As you came in tonight, you received a card to fill out if you indicated you wanted to speak. That card asked for your name, address, and other information. However, I will only read out your name, the town you reside in, and the name of the schools your children attend when it is your turn to speak. Anyone who is uncomfortable addressing the board in person may reach out to the board by email, telephone, or mail, and our contact information is available on the Lexington One website. We welcome all messages. All right. We are going to get started with Ms. Lauren Pellington. Ms. Pellington lives in Lexington. Her child attends Pleasant Hill Elementary School, and she is the Lexington One rep for SCEA.
Dr. Little and the board, I address you tonight as no stranger to advocating for what I believe in and the support of my fellow teachers and the thousands of students that we have. After the last meeting, I apologize for the cruel and demeaning words that were not spoken but demanded. We are, um, there are concerns. They are real concerns, yes. Are they allowed the liberty to share them? Absolutely. I'm not one who will be here to protest those who do not agree with me. Instead, I come here tonight for those who have concerns for further safety in the district. There's 15 days left. Had this meeting been held in May in any other year, you would see a handful of people that would have shown. Why? Because it's the end of the year. However, COVID hit and threw everyone for a loop. I'm again one of the few, but I am the voice of many. Teachers, students, and parents alike who feel the need, that it needs to be said that there is a divide. The divide is not healthy for our students more than the claims that we're wearing a mask is. While masks are no longer mandated, we still have anger and fear. Anger because how dare, uh, dare you segregate kids? But fear from those, please don't read these messages. Don't read these letters that are coming in. I'm gonna still wear my mask. Fear from other students who choose to mask out of care for others. My teacher is ill. My teacher is battling cancer. We're choosing to wear the masks. I'm proud to know that some kids in the school I teach in work with my kids in the special ed classroom in a unified PE class. Will openly wear their masks around my kids. They'll wear, not wear them the rest of the school, but they'll wear them around my kids because they care. The mandate was lifted without care to those who are state testing and needing to be around people that they have not been around all year. We are at 15 days. Why is it that those that who did not agree with the masks are upset? Do those who do agree with the masks and being safe within the classroom not care anymore? With who? You guys won. Like no one else cares. I'm here to say that as a teacher and a parent, that over all the noise, I continue to support those who care for the students as a whole. We matter too. I hope the threats that have been made are dealt with to the fullest extent. There are a large number of us that support the efforts that have been made by the district. You deserve to hear that, if even just from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pellington. Next, we have Mr. James Reynolds. He lives in Lexington, and his students are in the Lula program.
It's become ridiculously apparent to me that we have either a woefully ignorant school board or a school board who, by and large, are derelict of their duties. Either way, Lexington One parents and students have no representation. Mr. Little seems to call all the shots, and with the board seemingly bowing at his feet, in the meantime, we have to fight and go above your heads even to get you to acknowledge the fundamental right of parents to make decisions for their children. Since the governor's executive orders, schools and teachers of this district have been, have decided that they are paid activists instead of educators. My question to the board is, what are you gonna do about it? State law, long established, states that teachers in our, in order to be qualified, have to pass an examination of the provisions and principles found in the U.S. Constitution and their loyalty to them. Does the board just approve anyone that's put forth for employment? How do we end up with teachers that directly neglect even your own policy that states, and I quote, "The board affirms the right of all students and staff to be treated with respect and to be protected from intimidation, discrimination, physical harm, and/or harassment." Once more, I would like the board to explain why, being elected officials, they need the superintendent's approval to visit schools in their district. The board is in charge of the superintendent. The superintendent, in turn, makes sure the schools abide by the board's policy. Why pay a man over $200,000 a year plus when these are the types of things going on in our district? Why are parents and students' concerns met with utter disdain and disregard and outright disrespect that this board, with the exception of one, has shown? If it wasn't clear before, it is now. The board and Mr. Little do not want to hear from the people of this district, but only want to stay and to defend their echo chamber of secrecy and authoritarianism. Talk is cheap. It's time for this board to step up and do your job, actually represent the parents and students of this district. For life of me, I can't comprehend why somebody would run for school board just to delegate all responsibility to a man who thinks suspending tax dollars is doing a good job or that more bureaucracy is a good thing. Our founding fathers of this great nation believed government should be limited and defined, not turned into a leviathan running roughshod on the people they are supposed to be representing. My hope and prayer on behalf of our children is that none of you are sitting here come next time around.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Next, we have Kathryn Reynolds. Ms. Reynolds is a, lives in Lexington, and her students attend the Lula program.
So I just want to say thank you tonight. The only reason why I'm actually here tonight is because of you guys. I've never seen or even been to a board meeting before the fourth, and you guys really did make it obvious that the board has not been making some decisions. Whether or not it was a choice of yours or it was forced by someone, I've come tonight as a Lexington One parent, but the next time I come here, I might just come in as a taxpayer. And Anderson, please pay attention. I've watched you. I know, but please pay attention. First thing that I would like to talk about is to have the board to actually have a discussion and make a decision together about the remaining funds allocated to Lexington One from the CARES Act. I was told in emails that this was discussed on April 13th meeting, and then upon watching that whole meeting, um, I was, I noticed that it was stated by Mr. Saunders that the district chose these categories for the funding, and I was unable to find anywhere where the school had made these decisions and who from the district then made this decision. Isn't that your guys' job? I don't, honestly don't know. Second thing is, I'm honestly so very thankful that my kids were in Lula this year because the level of harassment and discrimination and intimidation the faces face students have been that were able to opt out in masks is actually shameful. Honestly, your own policy specifically states that that kind of treatment is against these students' rights. This is horrible. Thirdly, whenever my kids were in the Lula program, I was able to finally see what kind of curriculum and material was being brought and taught to them. And disturbingly enough, my seventh grader, he is only 12 years old. My seventh grader is now aware of stuff like alcohol and drugs like cocaine. Like, I understand that this is a state-mandated curriculum, but I feel that parents really should have the syllabus to this subject matter and allow parents to decide what they're okay with, when their, what their children are learning. I am not naive to think that my kids won't be exposed to these type of vices at all, but I am strictly against, uh, it goes strictly against our biblical teachings, and I feel that has been violated. I said, it is not the job, it is not the school's job to teach the children this type of subject matter, and it has nothing to do with education. Every one of you were elected to represent the people and your personal feelings, not your personal feelings. You've neglected these duties, and it will no longer be tolerated. Time to show the district what you guys actually can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Next, we have Elijah Reynolds. Elijah lives in Lexington and attends the Lula program.
Okay, well, I would like to start off by saying thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for letting us actually come in and sit down and listen. And I would like to know why there are so many police officers around here. What are you scared of? Are you scared of a couple families asking a couple questions? I haven't been able to go to school because of the terrible decision, decisions made, and now I really miss it. I never knew I could ever miss school. Thank you.
Thank you, Elijah. Good job.
Can he concede his time to me?
No, ma'am. Next, we have Joshua Reynolds. Joshua lives in Lexington and is in the fourth grade Lula program.
Well, um, first of all, I think that the decisions that you guys have been making weren't very good at all. I've been struggling in school without seeing people, and I miss going to school, seeing my friends, and when I get home, I like to see my mom and dad whenever I get home. And I think that everything you guys been doing before you put the masks in school were okay, but I still think you guys can do better. And that's all.
Thank you very much, Joshua. Good job. Next, we have Isaac Reynolds. Isaac lives in Lexington, and he is in the first grade Lula program. Yeah, Isaac, stand to the side so we can, there you go. We can see you that way.
I think you guys should read the Bible. In Acts 238, repent and be baptized for the remissions of sins. You should do that too, and that's it.
Thank you for that word, Isaac. Good job. Next, we have Dana Holmesley. Ms. Holmesley lives in Lexington and has a student that will attend Lexington Elementary School.
I wanted to concede my time, but since you won't allow me, I wanted to concede it to Katie, so I'll just read part of her speech. Thank you for allowing me to formally address the board tonight. I want to first make it known that I have the utmost respect for the responsibilities and duties your positions hold as the authoritative governing body of our district. Decisions you make can and will make a tremendous impact on our children and community now and for years to come. I felt passionately about speaking to you here in a public meeting so that both the board and the community at large can be aware of the matters I'm about to discuss. Since the last board meeting, I took the time to go back and watch every board meeting since 2019. I have read the policy manual, I have pored over the South Carolina School Board Association website, and watched their training videos and webinars, and read every document I could get my hands on. Tonight, I want to talk about the important matters of the general funds budget and the board policy. I'll begin with the policies because you cannot really talk about anything regarding the school district without regard, referring to its policies. Policies are what guide our entire district and what tells our superintendent what practices and procedures he and his administration need to implement. It is how we maintain accountability, checks and balances, superior education standards, and financial responsibility. Policies are what help the community as a whole know our roles and responsibilities. The South Carolina School Board Association says that the school board's chief function is to adopt and revise policy, and that well-written policies foster a better understanding of board goals and expectations and greatly contribute to consistency across programs and practices. I was pleased to see the recent development of the ad hoc committee meetings where policies were being reviewed and revised. However, our policies manual overall is outdated, inconsistent, impractical, vague, and hard to locate. I did not see it on the district website anywhere despite the requirements from the South Carolina Department of Ed that says, "Schools, school districts must prominently post on the district's internet website and make available for public viewing and downloading the most recent version of the district policy manual and administrative rule manual." Regardless, I found the policy via the SC, SBA website. We have approximately 280 policies. Of those, 46 have not been reviewed and revised since 1985. Over half, 181, have not been reviewed or revised since 2005. Since 2018, only 10 have been adopted or amended. This is your primary function as a board. This board is not fulfilling the duties your committee, your community elected you to fulfill. The policies we have contradict themselves. I emailed the entire board about inconsistency of three policies, allowing a citizen to formally address the board through an agenda item and received no communication back on whether that matter would be addressed through policy review and revision. I was denied three times by the administration and board chair my request to formally speak in here tonight. I was told the agenda was made and set, and I could not be added to it in any way. Until I highlighted the policy inconsistencies and the legal implementations of this, didn't the board chair contact the district's legal services for clarity.
Thank you, Ms. Holmesley. Next, we have Katie Jeffcoat. Ms. Jeffcoat lives in Lexington and has a student that attends Gilbert Elementary School.
I just want you guys to know that I have so much respect for the roles you guys play. My name is Kathryn Carter Jeffcoat, so it's a hyphenated, that's part of the confusion. But I'm just gonna pick up from where she left off, and then when I run out of time, I'll be back here next week, or next meeting. Basically, our own board is not aware of the policies that they are responsible for. Our community members should not have to scour the policy manual in order to defend against cherry-picking policies that fit the opinions of the administration or any member of the board. Policies should be clear, legal, and easily implemented. We also have an incomplete policy manual. The SBS, the SC SBA says that policies should consistently cover the programs and procedures of our district. As we saw at last meeting, our administrator was implementing a district-wide practice with no policy in place, no consistency between schools, no direction to parents, basically no instruction whatsoever that would be implemented by a policy. This led me to begin researching our policies to begin with. From a fiscal perspective, there is an absence of policy on bids, service contracts, line item transfers, budget amendments, SRF fund allocations, and land purchase, just to name a few. Although some of these fall under the procurement code, that is not a replacement for board policy. Some districts have line item transfer policies requiring board approval for all transfers over $10,000. Here we are at the second reading of the budget, and when it is approved in a few weeks, there is no policy to ensure that a line item transfers, that line item transfers are not used in excess. Essentially, you are approving a budget that will be open to changes by our administration without your knowledge until after the fact. Why are we spending so much resources, time, preparing and reading and understanding a budget that can be drastically changed the moment after your approval is finalized? All these things are frequently occurring, affecting our district, costing us millions. This is money from our children. There are no policies in place for the board to employ to hold the administration accountable, which is one of the roles that you accepted when you accepted your positions. Not only do our policies make accountability impossible, we also have policies that turn over all authority to our superintendent. The board has the right to delegate authority, but that does not mean that the superintendent can forego proper accountability from the board. I obtained through a web search the intent of a ward for the grounds maintenance. I'm gonna switch to the back of my speech. We are only allowed to address you for three minutes at a board meeting. Emails are not returned. I would like to point out that the policies that I implement, that I tried to use to speak tonight, said I only had to tell you my topic. I was never asked any details about what I was gonna speak about. I had personal conversation, or correspondence with Kathy who said she would see about my request, I had personal correspondence with Jada, asking questions, and I had personal correspondence with Jeff, uh, Mr. Saunders, I apologize, um, about the specific things I want to address with the budget. If you're gonna have policies, follow them. Make them, revise them, do your job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jeffcoat. Carter hyphen Jeffcoat. I've seen your name like 17 different ways, so thank you for clarifying that for us. All right. Next, we have Mr. John Mu. Mr. Mu lives in Lexington and lives in the Carolina Springs Attendance Zone.
These are two children Lexington District One denied a public education to this school year. The superintendent said no for the exemption I requested. For the denial of their state constitutional right, you owe them an apology. Would you please look at me, at least? May 4th exposed that this district never had a mask policy. In light of the revelation, it makes me question who was creating the rules that so many blindly followed. Without an official policy, I question the legitimacy of everything enacted outside of the Department of Education's recommendations. The last board meeting, we, the people, followed your rules. We spoke, we demanded action and a response. Your response was a pre-planned propaganda video. Clearly, you had no intention on hearing anything we had to say. But thank you for doing that. It united the parents who wanted choice even more. So, we continued calling, we continued emailing, we continued the billboards, and our governor heard us. Thank you, Henry McMaster, for giving parents choice. In light of that, the district should have taken the lead and assured each student whose parents who did not want their kids wearing a mask, protection. In fact, the district has policies against intimidation and harassment and bullying, segregation of unmasked students in corners of rooms or in front of a class, or even not allowing students to participate in events. And then you have an email or letter sent out that students in graduation would not be able to participate if they didn't wear a mask. That's clear discrimination and intimidation. But shame on anyone who chose to continue to wear a mask. If our, if anybody who chose to pick on them for wearing a mask, shame on you. You shouldn't do that either. It works both ways. Everybody needs to understand that, and the school leadership here needed to take charge of that matter. It's time that this school board begin to govern with the authority and power we elected you to. It's clear that the board has given its power to the unelected hierarchy. So let's talk about leadership and the lack thereof. We have a failure in leadership in this school district, and that failure begins at the very top. The unchecked decision-making and abuse of power is the very example of our, of tyranny our founding fathers fought against over 200 years ago.
Mr. Mu, I'm gonna stop you. One of the guidelines for our community participation is to not discuss personnel and individuals, so I'm gonna ask you to pull that in a little bit. Thank you.
Can I get my time back then?
Sure. Please give him another 20 seconds.
Thank you. Now it's time for parents to stand up on behalf of our students, our children. Many of the actions and decisions made during this school year show that the superintendent, the board, some administrators do not have the best interest of our children at heart. We demand more transparency, accountability from each school, principal, district official, the superintendent, and the board who was elected to be the representatives of the parents and the children, not blind followers of the superintendent. As a result of poor decision-making, dishonesty regarding non-existing policies, and the total lack of respect of community input, I respectfully demand the resignation of the superintendent of Lexington School District One effective immediately.
Next, we have Mr. Stephen Smith McKenzie. Mr. McKenzie has a student that attends Lexington Elementary.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm here and I've presented a handout, I'm giving a handout to you. I think we need to start, since I have a very limited amount of time, on page three of the handout. First of all, you can look at page two, and you can see my two children. Both of them attend Lexington Elementary, one in K4, the other is a second grader. My issue is the coding of absences in regards to COVID, and in particular to my, my two children who have been, have missed 45 days of school as a result of their mother alleging they had COVID-19-like symptoms. I presented to you in the handout, and you will see that if you look at the timeline of events. I think we probably need to start with paragraph two. Lexington Elementary started class on August 31st. My daughter did not start class until September 14th. She was given nine parent note excuse absences. If you look down, my son, my son who's in K4, he did not get enrolled until September 30th because his mother kept him out until then. There's a email between second-grade teacher regarding assignments, and if you'll turn to the second page, you'll see that my children between, and I think this is the most relevant part since I've got a minute and 30 seconds left, but during spring break, my children missed the 10 days before spring break, 10 days after spring break. Conveniently, with a COVID excuse, all, all the mother did was call in and said they had COVID. There was no excuse written, no excuse given. If you look on page 36 of your handout, you will see a letter from Ms., from the assistant principal at Lexington Elementary. In that letter, she states, and I quote, "This letter is informing your child," I won't say her name, "but has accumulated six unexcused days of absences." This is on December 11th, 2020. "A written excuse," I've highlighted it down at the bottom, "must be provided within three days after the student returns to school. The parent legal guardian, physician, or other appropriate person must sign the excuse. All excuse noted should include the following facts: dated, the excuse is written, days of absence, reason for the absence, telephone number where parent legal guardian can be found." Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my children have either been educationally neglected or they're being physically neglected because they have not seen a doctor for 45 absences of school, and nobody at Lexington Elementary has demanded that they see a doctor. All they, all their mother had to do was call in and say that they were sick. No proof was provided to Lexington Elementary to document this, even though I was given a letter from the assistant principal that said, "Proof was required." That is the policy of Lexington Elementary. That has not been adhered to, and if that is the case, then the school nurse is running Lexington Elementary School and not the administrators. Because all you gotta do Because all you've got to do is call the school nurse and say, "My child's sick." That's it. You don't have to provide written documentation. You don't have to do anything else. That is the sum total of it. I appreciate your time. I would ask the board to look into this extensively and determine whether or not these excuses are valid and whether or not they should be coded differently.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Next, we have Julia Purvis. Ms. Purvis lives in Lexington and has a student that attends Lake Murray Elementary School.
Are you staying in the number order? Okay, that's fine. Okay, first, I want to say that I actually made a formal email to you guys 10 days in advance, and only one of you responded to me and said that the agenda was set, so just want to put that out there. Second, I am going to finish a little bit of Katie's speech. I obtained through a web search, not the district website, that the intent of the award for the grounds maintenance, this is mentioned in the budget presentation. It is shown that as a 720,000 increase, one member, one board member questioned the length of the contract that was told that it was for one year. However, according to the document obtained, this is a three-year contract tolling $2.2 million. Is the board not provided copies of the contracts when they are awarded? Or taking a step back, is the board not aware that a contract is going out to bid? Was the board aware of this ground maintenance contract? And is this part of the five-year plan for the district, assuming we have one? According to your website, Lexington One employs ground workers. I heard it mentioned that custodians were doing lawn care, and this is the reason for needing grounds maintenance contract. So the custodians can go back into the building. Where are the grounds maintenance staff? If this was initiated by the custodial demands from COVID, why were SRF funds not being used to meet this need or the custodial demand? From SRF One presentation I have, we still have 1.4 million to allocate, as well as around 40 million from SRF Two and Three. I also noticed that the intent to award, that the intent to award said for lot 1, 2, 3. Is this a landscaping company for the new facilities being built? If so, why is this not in the capital funds budget? And why do we not have a board capital budget? When it comes to policy, we have a policy addressing procurement, but in that policy, it states that the board can delegate authority, which it has obviously done. It seems our board has delegated authority to our superintendent in every single policy that allows them to do so. This has created an atmosphere that lacks transparency and accountability in the board superintendent relationship. Therefore, board approval was not required for this multimillion-dollar contract, and why the board was not even aware of this contract until first reading, although the contract was awarded months earlier. Because there is no policy, the board is not given a chance to approve these kinds of things. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Purvis, and your very cute assistance.
Thank you.
And I did skip someone. I apologize. Your card was stuck to the back of the previous card. I apologize. My mistake. We now have Mr. Stephen Smith McKenzie, and he has a student that attends Lexington Elementary. No, this is a different Mr. McKenzie.
Is this Mr. Everett Howard?
Yes. Okay, I messed up again. I'm sorry. There are a lot of cards up here. Everett Desmond Howard, excuse me, Mr. Howard. But he is speaking about the attendance for the McKenzie children.
Right. First, I want to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to appear before you tonight, and I want to follow up to what my son-in-law, Stephen McKenzie, just presented about his children, my grandchildren. My granddaughter is a second grader at Lexington Elementary School. My grandson is in 4K at Lexington Elementary School. And the problem that we both have, and I know my son-in-law has given you some material that you're reading, I urgently ask you, but please read it and consider it, and hear what we've got to say tonight about it. But the problem that basically we have is my granddaughter's had 45 absences from school. My grandson has a similar number of absences from school. A lot of those have been medical excuses. And our position is the district has not followed its own policy in the medical matters because it clearly says, just as it said there in Ms. Prezzy's intervention plan from the first meeting that they had, of what was required as far as medical documentation. It was very, very specific district policies the same way, and it's just not been followed. And please understand, I don't fault the district for my grandchildren's absence. That's solely the responsibility of an irresponsible parent. The teachers that they have have done an excellent job considering the small amount of instructional time they've had with these children. In fact, my grandchildren have talked to me about how much they've enjoyed school and how much they enjoy their teacher. It's just a shame they haven't seen them more than they have. Because when you look at those absences, that means they have missed more than two months of instructional time. And I'm not a teacher. I've never been one, but that's got to be very difficult to expect a child to learn when they've missed two months of instructional time, plus the disruption it causes in the classroom because you have a child who hasn't been there that has to be called up and is struggling with that. And we just ask that the district take a look at its own policy and adhere to it. That's all we ask. And I think if you look, because what the district has done, and Steve has done a good job of appealing this thing through the chain of command from the school level all the way up to the superintendent's office, and that's what brings us here tonight, is nobody's really taken a look at it. They've justified how they've coded things, but haven't looked at the bigger issue of, first of all, where has the policy failed? Because the coding has been done on faulty information. And I think if you took a closer look at it and adhered to policy, you would come up with an entirely different conclusion to it. So what we sincerely ask you tonight is review the information that Steve has provided to you. Feel free to contact either one of us if you have questions or need more information from us. But do your job. So far, the district has, in my opinion, advocated more for an irresponsible parent than they have for the children, which is their responsibility. This is a great school district. I expect my children to get a good education, and they can. This district is known for that. Please help us with that, and again, I thank you for your time and for taking time to listen to us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Howard. Next, we have Rebecca Godfrey. Ms. Godfrey lives in Lexington and has students that attend Lexington Middle School.
First of all, I want to say thank you so much for honoring Governor McMaster's executive order to allow masks to be optional the day after he made it. That was really wonderful. And I'm very grateful, and I've loved seeing my kids go to school without a mask and come home without a mask, smiling the whole time. It has really done wonders for them. Secondly, I would like to ask you to confirm at your next meeting that masks and vaccines will remain optional for next year, for teachers as well as students. I know a lot of parents who will choose an alternate to public education if they aren't told with certainty that this next year will be back to normal. We also need assurance that contact tracing will be a thing of the past, no matter what comes in the future months. I don't know of a single child who was forced to quarantine who actually became ill. So please confirm to all of us at your next meeting that we will not be doing contact tracing next year. I know many wonderful families in Lexington who have already quietly pulled their kids out. They aren't the type to speak out. They don't send emails. They just wash their hands of it and go quietly. I have a feeling many more great families will be doing the same if each child and each teacher's freedom to choose is not fully reinstated next year. Next, I'm concerned that the superintendent is unwisely encouraging kids to get vaccines, and they're still in their experimental trial. More people have died from vaccines in the last few months than have died in the last 20 years from all vaccines combined. That is alarming. The superintendent is stepping out of bounds when he gives medical advice to kids and then incentivizes it with promises like, "Get the vaccine, and then you never have to quarantine, you never have to mask, you never have to miss prom, you never have to miss a basketball game, you don't have to miss graduation." It's too much incentivizing coming from a superintendent to give medical advice like that. This messaging borders on coercion, and I think it is a very dangerous approach with our kids. Please preserve the freedom to choose without penalizing or rewarding. Let people just choose with no penalty, no reward. Let them have their personal freedoms. School board, please change your policy so that you can vote on matters that affect tens of thousands of people. You are elected officials, and we need checks and balances now more than ever. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Godfrey. Next, we have John Michael Beatty Jr. Mr. Beatty lives in Lexington and has a student or students that attend Deerfield Elementary.
Good evening, board. Not nearly as prepared as some people here, but echoing a lot of sentiments. First was masks. Again, please know more mandatory masks, and do not segregate any of those that do or do not. There's been independent data for almost a year now suggesting that kids are not at risk, and masks are not nearly as effective, especially the cloth ones we're sending our kids to school with. We need to start asking questions and looking for results and not blindly following experts from above that have been proved they've been lying to manipulate people's habits. Suggestions have even come up that this might become a flu or seasonal thing. That's not acceptable. Many things with the masks, you know, they're damaging, rebreathing bacteria, causing fear of others. People are hiding behind the masks socially. It's become a thing in other countries that have done this for years, where people start to wear them just as a, you know, I guess it would be for lack of a better term. And it's also dividing people and starting to cause hysteria, so we don't need to add to that. The second thing is vaccines. Again, no mandatory vaccines. I'm not a native SRF. I have a 15-month-old who has been through all the ones that I've been through. You know, there are some that, when the disease is that bad, you've got to take that risk and you roll the dice. But this is extremely experimental. It's a new technology. Some of the companies were not even successful until this go-around. There's no long-term risk benefit. There's already bad side effects up and down the world, from minor to death. So it should not be mandatory for children, definitely. The last thing I want to do is kind of off track of everyone else a little bit for the moment, but it's going to be my next focus to look through is critical theory. There should be no teaching of critical theory, 1619 Project, or any courses that are designed to shame or divide us. They're not helpful. They're not useful. This critical theory itself, besides the current one that's being pushed, is rooted in Marxism. It's an idea that started over 100 years ago to cause revolution, divide people, and conquer us. They use different words to twist it. Diversity. If you read the people that do these real teachings, diversity doesn't mean diversity of thought. It only means diversity of physical attributes. Inclusion only means inclusion as long as you follow the rules of the people that are setting them. Equity. Equity means equal outcomes. We're all different. We all have different desires. It's not humanly possible. I guess I would manage my time a little bit better, but thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. Next, we have Madison Rogers. Ms. Rogers lives in Lexington and has a student that attends New Providence Elementary.
Hi. I appreciate y'all's attention this evening. I want to say thank you for honoring the governor's executive order and Spearman's instruction with regard to the parental choice and student choice in the schools. I had hoped that teachers and school administrators would be afforded the same choice at the same time and encourage you as elected stewards of our students and community to make it so going forward. Next year looms a bit dark and distressing to many of us, parents, students, and teachers as we anticipate the potential hurdles that we're going to have to jump through and the rights that we will have to fight to keep. We would love to not be here next year demanding fair and equal treatment of our students regardless of their personal choices when it comes to these bacteria-infested masks and potential death shots that no one has any liability for. We hope to not have to be here, but we will if it comes to that. Or you'll see a drastic decline in enrollment, as I can guarantee you, there is a multitude of parents that will not subject their children to this CDC circus for another year. Please provide us as soon as possible with information on what we can expect for the next school year. Also, please stop emailing out vaccination propaganda to us parents. We don't want it. We don't need it. It's not your place. Believe me, this crap's been shoved down our faces long enough. Those who want to subject their children to an experimental, non-approved drug know good and well how to do it without your involvement. Regarding the board members before me, it's the belief and consensus amongst a great number in this community that some of you seated there no longer have the best interests of our school and community at heart. If you yourselves find this to be the case and feel that you are no longer able to adequately meet the demands of this district, I suggest you begin to take the necessary steps to remove yourself from this board and allow others the opportunity to improve upon what is left behind. And for those of you who are fighting for transparency and the good of us all, thank you. I really can't believe the way that y'all handled the issue with Katie Carter. That was very telling. But again, we're grateful that the superintendent followed the governor's and the South Carolina Department of Education's orders. However, we do wish that that battle that took place didn't have to, and we hope in the future that the concerns of the community will be heard the first time.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Next, we have Ms. Irene Bearwald. Ms. Bearwald lives in Lexington and has students at Riverbluff. And I think at Crumble Cookies, which is, to me, more important than Riverbluff.
They're Lula students, so they can work from eight to four. She likes that. All right, I'm going to talk slow. First, I would like to request that we look at our neighboring school district, Lexrich Five, and how they handle their public participation portion of their board meetings. They have a link under the board information section on their website called "Public Participation" that has the individual's comments and then the board's responses. It may not always be the answer that they are hoping for, and it may not be anything more than, we will look into that. But what it does allow for is that individuals who may have the same questions or concerns, but may not have asked the questions personally, are able to see the responses from the district. It also allows the appearance of an open discourse between citizen parents and the school board district. I'd like to also formally ask, and I have emailed the district already, and I've gotten responses, but hey, going to try everybody, formally ask the board to consider allowing virtual students to participate in the arts in their zone schools if their parents are willing to provide transportation. The arts should be given the same opportunities as the ROTC programs and various magnet programs. The reason for being enrolled in the two separate schools should be equal among all interests, not just ROTC and magnets. I say that because I'm a parent of a band kid who can't do band next year. Lastly, as a parent that has been extremely active in the school system over the past 12 years, I find it insane that we have had more participation from parents over an item that could have been required under the school's dress code than other factors having to do with the education and our children's safety in schools. I've attempted to locate the right that I keep being told is being violated, and I've had no luck, and no one's been willing to tell me. I'd also like to provide a different perspective to our current mask issue. We are asking our board to override guidelines that are set by specific entities whose job it is to attempt to prevent things from spreading. We are disregarding the education or background of the individuals on the school board and just saying, "Do it because I say so." If the board agrees with parents who want to do away with masks or not, it shouldn't matter. There are times where our personal feelings about an issue must be put aside because our job isn't to force our personal views on others. Consider a science teacher that is told to teach evolution, but they firmly believe in intelligent design. They can't just go against state standards. The teacher must acknowledge that they have to set aside their personal beliefs and do what's being asked by the state. It just seems like we are asking our board to step out of their lane of expertise to appease others. Many people quote the governor's executive order as a reason why the masks need to go, but his experience and background is in law and politics. He does not have the reputation as a medical professional that would allow him to make said executive order with any validity, yet people stand behind it like it's infallible. We knew what to expect when kids went back to school. We knew that we couldn't maintain the suggested six-foot of social distance to allow for no masks on students. For anyone that says it's gone on long enough, I challenge that to say it was made perfectly clear by the school district prior to school starting as to what the expectations would be from students and their families. I just don't understand why so many individuals feel as though they've been hoodwinked.
Thank you, Ms. Bearwald. Next, we have Ms. Debbie Hine. Next, we have Ms. Debbie Heim. Ms. Heim lives in Lexington and has students that attend several of our schools, Lexington High School primarily.
I just have children that attend Lexington High in several grades. I'm sorry if that was confusing. I have other children, but they don't attend school here. Thank you. That was really interesting. Thank you for your comments to the lady who just spoke before. I did notice that we were just previously in the overflow room, and the mask was not on. Okay, my apologies.
Ms. Heim, please don't address other community members.
Okay. Thank you for listening to people. I appreciate that. Thank you for letting us come. I'm seeing a lot of similar issues come up, and we are all on the same team. I just saw Ms. Ed Red, Red for Ed, shaking her head to the lady who had talked about having the open forum with the questions and answers so people can ask a question and see the board's response. That would be wonderful. We have the same goals. We really do. We can work together, and we can make this a win-win. I specifically would like to address just a couple of things from Mr. Little's presentation from the last board meeting on May 4th. There were two slides in particular he showed. One was from Mr. Ryan Brown, South Carolina Department of Education, who said, "Our schools are open five days a week because of the mitigation strategies that we've employed." We had a law that went through the legislature and the governor signed on April 22nd requiring schools to offer five days face-to-face instruction. That's why we are open five days. Okay? It has nothing to do with mitigation. It has everything to do with the law, so thank you for following the law on that. The other slide I would like to address is from the Elizabeth Fibbs. I don't know her, and I don't know how to pronounce that. I apologize. She's the South Carolina Association of School Administrators Executive Director. She was discussing specifically the law that was recently passed, Law 147, the COVID Liability Immunity Act here in this state. She chose to follow DHEC's advice in requiring masks, but she did not read the entire law. I'd love to read Section 2. It's like three sentences long, but it talks about, it's for businesses and healthcare providers to have reasonable protections. And providing such immunity to businesses and healthcare providers that operate consistently with applicable public health guidance will help ameliorate the adverse impacts of a closed economy and resulting unemployment. Public health guidance is defined in the law. That's what I love about the law. There's no ambiguity. Everything is defined. And it's defined as any applicable published guidance, directive, order, or rule provided by the South Carolina Occupational Safety and Health Administration, DHEC, or others. Page 3 from OSHA, South Carolina OSHA, COVID-19 Prevention General Requirements, Prevention Ideas for Workplaces. Loose-fitting face masks or cloth covers may be voluntarily worn by workers as a best practice to prevent transmitting droplets from coughs or sneezes, but they do not prevent inhalation of fine aerosols and are not protective in close proximity. That is right from SC OSHA. Which I just want to reiterate, covers workers in the workplace, like all staff in our district as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Heim. Next, we have Matt Heim. I will give you just a minute. All right, next, we have Matt Heim. Mr. Heim lives in Lexington and has several students at Lexington High School.
Well, thank you. It's just two kids there. First, honestly, I just wanted to say thank you. At the end of the meeting two weeks ago, a board member said, "I hate COVID." I want to say thank you for those thoughts. It brought a very important human element to the conversation. I honestly really do appreciate that. I also appreciate the open and honest communication from the board members and the others who chose to speak after that and just share their thoughts with us. That's one of the things this community is crying for. We just want to know what's going on. It's an open, public thing. Please tell us. If we disagree, we can have a discussion. You have our power. We truly do need, and our voice with that as well. I wrote a whole speech, you know, and some of it's kind and nice, and some of it are some concerns I have. I'll probably just send my concerns an email. And I just wanted to just bring back the realness to this, like we are a community. We do work together. We're all in this together. There are good schools here. There's bright, capable, well-meaning people on our board. Okay? There's good people who work in this district, the administrative level, at the student level, and everywhere, and we want to keep those people. We want them to be able to do their jobs and do a good job. We all want the same things. We truly, truly do. I think some of the problem that we're having is parents, and one of the things, a fundamental right for parents, the right that I guess no one pointed out to some people, the Supreme Court follows a doctrine that parents have a fundamental right to direct the upbringing and education of their children. They're in the best position. Their children are the natural affection of parents. You know, they love their kids above all other objects. That is really what's happening. And as everybody knows in nature, if there is something between a parent and a child, it does not matter what has to move to get to that. And that's why you see so much emotion. That's why we're so frustrated and angry. It's not because we dislike you. It's not because we think you're bad people. We just care so much. My entire life, everything that I do, every day, is invested in my kids. We've built our house for them. Their rooms are bigger than ours. Our entire yard and everything about it is for them. I had such a wonderful childhood growing up. The high school especially were some of my best years. I would ditch class on Friday afternoons as a senior to play football. Like, I loved that. I was that kind of a kid. I want my kids to have those same opportunities. My kids are frankly much smarter than I am. They're on the trajectory that my father had. My three brothers and I, we cared about different things, but that was our choice. Please, we want our kids to have those options. As I've mentioned before, I helped with the wrestling program at the high school. There's a new head coach. He was explaining some of the directives this summer. We're not really sure what we're going to be able to do. You know, and I'm asking the board, will you please set some policies so these kids can have a normal summer to prepare for seasons? They really get four seasons. Most of these kids don't go to college to play sports. They will remember each and every one of those seasons, every game, everything else. It is so important. God, just please act. And one other thing that I did want the board to kind of help me answer is, I guess our COO and CFO are the same position. One person holds that. And I was just wondering if the board approved that or not. So I just wanted to say thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Heim. Next is Abilisa Ortiz. Ms. Ortiz lives in Lexington and has students at Pleasant Hill Elementary and Middle.
Okay, so this is my second board meeting. I'm usually too busy to be able to make it on here. I came to the United States 21 years ago. I'm American, but I came for grad school, married in here to a southern boy who graduated from Lexington High School and had three children. Two, all three of them are, two of them were premature. The last time I told you the story about the struggles they had with the mask mandate. My boys do not have full-on capacity like you and I do. Actually, I don't have full-on capacity either. I cannot wear a mask either. The reality is, this is not just a little symbol. This is not just a medical preventive device. We only use a mask when you go to the doctor's office, when you have symptoms of the flu. Usually, they have the little note that says, "If you have symptoms of the flu, please put on the mask." But they don't make you wear the mask if you're a healthy person. Now, I'm going to give you a little, what I noticed, what made me come to the last board meeting was the video that we were sent. It was my wake-up call. It was the, "You are not sitting down anymore. It's time to stand up." And I felt disrespected. I felt demeaned. Now, I'm going to give you a little, my take back from that video was that the mask is just a tool for the bigger means, which is eventually we want to shut up every kid with the experimental product. I'm going to give you a little history lesson. In 1976, there was an epidemic of swine flu. It started in the military bases. It led to the development of a vaccine that was released on the emergency use. The vaccine was given to millions before it was pulled out because it caused severe autoimmune disorders, including Guillain-Barré syndrome. It cost millions of dollars. As a result, in 1986, they passed a legislation that gave full immunity to all pharmaceutical companies for all vaccines. Now, that means that from that point forward, if your child dies or if he gets injured by a vaccine, we have zero recourse. And I found that out the hard way because my own oldest child had a severe allergic reaction to a vaccine, and I was not even told that that was a reaction that she could have. Now, if you come back to the corin vaccine, this is the second time that they approved for emergency authorization, and they ended up, and they already have over 4,000 deaths reported to the virus system, which is the monitoring system that we have for adverse events. There is nothing else that we can use to see the dangers associated with vaccines. Now, we have an issue because our children may be given something that can mend them for life, and there is no recourse.
Thank you very, I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Ms. Ortiz.
So I would like, for the next meeting, to have an answer. If what the requirements are for the next school year, because I will have to decide if my children will be homeschooled or not.
Thank you. If you have additional questions, feel free to email them to us. Thank you very much. Next, we have Danielle Bowers. Ms. Bowers lives in Lexington and has students that attend Lake Murray Beachwood and Lexington High School.
Thank you, Board and Superintendent. I grew up in a suburb of Portland, Oregon. When I was in fourth grade, the quiet and kind area I grew up in had an influx of gang activity. There were gangs recruiting children, spreading drugs, and causing fear. So, in an effort to stop this, certain schools took it upon themselves to enforce rules of kids playing together in more than groups of four. On the playground, teachers would correct and sometimes yell at students if they saw kids in more than groups of four, never the mind that we sat in larger groups in the classroom. This caused so many problems. As children, we were forced to choose who we liked enough to be in our group. I lost friends. I saw the true colors of children who showed love and compassion and tried to play with others, but more often, I remember kids turning on friends. I remember bickering and fighting among classmates. It divided us, and the adults, specifically teachers and administrators, allowed it. In fact, they were the ones encouraging it. Over 30 years later, and I can still feel the worry and pit in my stomach of having to go to school each day. And this only lasted for a couple months. This may not seem like a big deal as an adult, but it is something that greatly affected me as a child and our children are going through today. By turning a blind eye and not speaking up when segregation, discrimination, and intimidation is taking place in our schools by administrators and teachers when we have in the guidelines what is acceptable, we are teaching our children to do these things. Masks versus no masks, vaccines versus no vaccines. Separating our kids is wrong, and any plan for now or in the coming year to separate is not okay. As I have heard many reports of teachers blasting children for not wearing masks, I think, would it be tolerated in the schools if we allowed our kids to act this way? The idea that our kids pay closer attention to what we do versus what we say is something I am very well, in fact, I am aware of because I have five children. I see that they watch more of what I do than the things that I try and tell them. We need to stop the fear speech and allow families to make their own health and medical decisions without bullying. I respectfully ask that, as a school board and superintendent, you put in place a plan for this fall to allow our children and staff to continue to choose on their own to wear a mask, whether receiving the vaccine is right for them, and to stop wasting the time of contact tracing. Kids are losing out on things because of this. With exception to one of you, one of the school board members, you're all sitting idly while you allow our children to miss out on experiences that they are passionate about, that they've practiced, planned, and worked hard for. Parents throughout this district must stand up. We can't assume that the board has our best interests at hand. Their lack of transparency regarding funds, policy, and tolerance of staff demeaning is apparent, and we see that.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Next, we have, I think last, I think we're going to end on a high note here with Trip Bowers. Trip lives in Lexington and is a second grader at Lake Murray Elementary. All right.
My name is Trip Bowers. I go to Lake Murray Elementary School. I don't think it is right to, that teachers at my school have to wear masks, even if they do want, don't want to. I miss all their smiles. I also don't like that I can't play outside with my friends in other classes. I miss seeing them. My mom and dad have taught my brothers, sister, and I that separating people by skin color would just believe, or even if you are a Clemson fan, it is wrong. By telling us to stay far apart, we miss out on all the good things we can learn from each other. I also think making me older brothers, my older brothers get the vaccine is wrong. My parents teach us to respect and take care of our bodies. We eat healthy, exercise, and play outside a lot. But if it feels wrong to get a shot, that is just an experiment. I hope you remember that honesty is the best policy and telling the truth even is its hard. It is what you should show us, kids. Thank you for your time.
Good job, Trip. Thank you very much for coming tonight. All right, that concludes our community participation time.